To call to order our work session tonight. And what we're going to do for your purpose again is we're going to go through and introduce ourselves. Before that, I want to talk a little bit about procedure. We do have it planned that tonight what we're going to do is to listen to three presenters on why their firm should function or be accepted as our facilitators for our long-range plan. And these are three that have responded. And the time period will be roughly this, that each group will be provided 20 minutes to make a presentation. After they're complete with their 20 minutes, and it can be shorter than that, but that's up to you. Then we will open it up for approximately 20 minutes for questions as well. And then we allow for a little bit of four or five minutes for transition in and out, and to bring our second and our third groups, same thing. I would caution board members that what we do want is that any questions that are raised here are consistent with the questions that we raise with our other two presenters. If you wish to take notes, that's perfectly acceptable, but realize come Thursday, we're going to collect those notes, so please bring them with you. And then Barbara will keep those on record for anybody who makes a data request. So make sure your notes are clean and you know that somebody else may request to look at those notes. Okay? Any questions you have before we do that part? Then what we'll do is we'll go around the table here and then I'll ask you please to do the same thing again. And you have an advantage because you've got our names in front of you. So you can enforce that. And we'll do our best to honor as well. So with that...
Got our names too, with the exception of Judy, who is not able to be with us to a family emergency.
Okay.
So I'm Meg, I'm the substitute Judy.
Thanks, Meg. Denise, you want?
Denise Pontrelli Superintendent.
Mark Burns, Director.
Elizabeth Weisberg, Treasurer.
Sarah Stivland, Clerk.
Mike Patatchik, Chair.
Shelley Pierce, and Vice Chair.
Tina Riley, Director.
Jennifer Pelletier, Director.
So we're on.
I think so.
You want to start our timer?
You're live. I think I've got on my watch 4:10. Hopefully that matches up. It's...
It's 4:12 there. We'll start here.
Okay, good. We wrote it down.
So yes, I'm Meg Parsons. I'm a Principal Cunningham Group with me Scott Krenner and Todd Larson. Judy is not able to be here because she had a family emergency, and she apologizes for not being able to be here. But we're really excited to be here. We think that your long-range planning effort just really works well with what our values are, our collaborative process, our culture of innovation, and our expertise in educational facility planning and design all kind of coalesced into what I think you need at this point in time. Am I doing this or are you doing this?
No.
You've got it, okay. So we have an agenda for your approval today. We're going to talk about the who, what, why, where, how type of stuff. We know that we've got 20 minutes. We'll try to keep it brief. We'll try not to talk too fast, but you know, we'll try to get through it. And then 20 minutes for question and answer. That's correct?
Correct.
Excellent. I'm going to turn it over to Todd, who's going to talk a little bit about the master plan.
So why a master plan? You know, we see a really powerful call to do a long-range master plan in your mission and strategic plan, to ensure that your buildings and your learning spaces provide the right kinds of educational facilities for student achievement and to support the portrait of a Stillwater student. Combined with the guiding change document that you've provided, we really see strong guidelines to guide a master planning process for the district. So one of the ways that we keep your values at the forefront of a process is through a Wordle like this. These are drawn from your strategic plan, your mission statement, and the guiding change document, and they really start to pull out common themes and start to kind of prioritize things by scale. So seeing here that, you know, community, personalized learning, and relationships really start to jump out of those documents to guide a process forward.
So just a little bit about master planning. What you see here is just a brief diagram. On the left are things that we need to know about where you're at, where is it that you are now? And on the right-hand side, it's about where you want to be. What's the future look like? What a master plan is, is it's collaborative, it's engaging, it's a living document. What it isn't is siloed, narrow, or a finished design. This is something that's going to continue on, and you can see there's kind of a swirl because you're going to learn things as you go through that process. So who is Cunningham Group? Oops, wrong way. Take that off. We're a company of 330 people in five locations domestically and international, but we're based here in the Twin Cities. Judy and I have actually worked for the company for 30 years. We know each other very well. Not her substitute, but you know, we're very close. We have a lot of commonalities. But when we started with the company in the late 80s, early 90s, there were only 20 people. About 85% of our work is repeat client work, and that talks about how we've grown and why we've grown over the last 30 years. Your team, and I get to brag about Judy because she's not here, consists of Judy Hoskins, who is the Principal in Charge. Judy is a leader in our industry. She's the past President of A4LE, Association for Learning Environments. She's a Fellow of that organization. She's active in AIA CAE Committee on Architecture and Education. She most recently led a symposium in Washington DC on safety and security in schools with the Marjorie Douglas Stoneman students, with educators, with architects, and with industry leaders and politicians. She has a deep breadth of experience in planning and design. Todd?
I'm Todd Larson. I am a project manager in our grow group and would be your primary point of contact through this process. And I think I'm most excited about the opportunity to really work with a community-based process to build a master plan and hear diverse voices and build consensus on a pathway forward for a plan.
Can I just say that Todd came to us from St. Paul Public Schools. He was a senior project manager with them, and I've worked with him for 10 years? Nine years? Something like that?
Yeah.
On the client side.
And last but not least, I'm Scott Krenner, project designer. I'm the market group design leader for Cunningham's education group. And you may not think, well, does design have a place this early on in the process? But it really does. It's because really the design thinking and decisions that we make early on really shape the future in our results. So really appreciate the opportunity for that.
So we talked a little bit about Judy's leadership. There's some other organizations that we're... Department of Defense Educational Activities. We've written the Edspec there. Scott and I have done charrettes around the world, including Germany and Japan on basis. I think the point is that it's not just about architecture for us. It's about the kids. And it's about how educational facilities can uplift kids and put teachers and kids in the right space for the right thing that they're doing. So just in brief, Cunningham Group, we have a philosophy of designing with, not for. We have a spirit of collaboration, which we really firmly believe in. Authentic engagement with the community is really critical to everything we do, and it goes along with that design with, not for piece. We're experts in next century learning, and Scott will talk a little bit about what that means to us and where we're going to go with that. And we're committed to providing innovative learning environments and experiences for kids and for teachers, too.
So that's a little bit about who we are. I want to talk a little bit about what this process looks like and what we want to do together collaboratively. So, you know, we see an opportunity to really work with your strategic plan and to support your world's best workforce goals through this process, and to create a transparent community-based process that can listen to diverse viewpoints and build consensus through that process to create community ownership of a plan and create a way forward with the master planning process. And so the desired results from your guiding change document are one of the key components of starting to build with you a plan for what are key outcomes from the master planning process. And in addition to that, really using them as guidelines for starting to address and answer the questions that haven't been asked yet that are going to come up through this process, and how do we speak to those and how do we address those as well. And so through that, we see, you know, some opportunities to really listen to community and student voice, to look at, you know, equitable facilities across the district, safety and security, and build, you know, spaces that support personalized learning and next century learning.
So the opportunities that come with a master plan are that it's not just about fixing what's broken, it's about what are you doing next in education? And that's the combining of those two pieces are critical because you want to spend the money wisely, and that's how you do it, is you package your projects in a way that makes sense holistically for kids.
When we talk about next century learning as it relates to long-range facility planning, it's not just about do we have the right amount of space, you know, across the district, but do we have the right amount of space in the right locations? Do we have the right kinds of space to support the vision that you guys have for teaching and learning?
Just going back one step.
Sure.
This is Alexandria High School in Alexandria, Minnesota. It opened in 2014, and Fast Company called it the Googleplex of schools. It's really about innovation at the high school level there.
So we know that... No, it's okay. Interject as much as possible. So we know that, you know, sort of the one-size-fits-all approach really doesn't work as well as if we're trying to engage as many learners as possible, that a variety of spaces that allows for multiple levels of engagement of learning so that we can engage students no matter where they're at. We talk about, and we've used this term next century, okay? You guys have probably heard the term 21st century, but while we're operating in the 21st century and we feel like, you know, we really need to be forward-thinking, that we need to be thinking about the future, and just kind of next century allows us to really think about what's next for our kids. And you see, you see the attributes that we have outlined here actually align a lot with your profile of a Stillwater graduate, you know, the critical thinking, the creativity, and the collaboration. Luckily they all start with C, so it's easy to remember on that list. But it's those type of attributes that we want to keep in mind as we look at our...
It's like naming the seven dwarfs. It's always hard to do.
So the idea about rapidly reconfigurable, the architecture should not get in the way of teaching them, that two spaces can become one with the ease of opening up a wall in this case. The idea about mobile furnishings and we like to say ubiquitous technology, no matter where you're on the building, it works the same. But mobile furniture and how, you know, that has been a game changer in how we just even visualize our current spaces, how a space like this could be completely reconfigured with the right kinds of furniture. Visual transparency, right? The idea that if we're trying to occupy more than just the classroom for place of learning, having that visual transparency, you know, the ability to have passive supervision really allows learning to extend beyond the footprint of the classroom. Relentless variety, giving kids options, you know, in this case, you know, these two students are challenging that one-size-doesn't-fit-all and forcing themselves into that one seat there. But the idea that giving kids options really gives students the best chance for success in their learning pathway. Inquiry-based learning, you know, we've heard that a lot, and a lot of schools are now providing opportunities for kids to engage and tinker with their hands and explore and really engage learning in a much different way. Again, the idea about gaining, giving kids access to learning in the way that they learn Shared ownership of space, you know, the idea that it's not just my classroom and that's the only place where learning happens for me, that it's about shared ownership of space, that we, again, the idea of, you know, how can we utilize the space that we have as best possible, you know, extending learning beyond the footprint of the classroom so that learning really can happen anywhere within the school, that every square inch can be utilized for learning is really important.
So, you know, where are those changes going to happen? Where are those opportunities going to occur? And we know that, you know, you've been taking a look at, you know, growth and changes in your population demographics, and so we really see part of this process being understanding where students are now, but also where we expect them to be. And beyond that, knowing that expectations change. And so how does a master plan really have strategies for addressing change in one or two or four years and be flexible and adaptable so that plans can evolve to where kids are, to where students are? And we see that, again, creating an opportunity that, you know, when you're making changes for enrollment, that can also be an opportunity for making those new learning spaces and creating learning environments that fit with programming and align with instruction, and are also flexible for evolution in instruction and what we're doing in three and five and seven years. This is St. Anthony Park Elementary in St. Paul. This project had multiple goals. One of them was growing for a waitlist and having some alignment issues with not having equal sections in every grade. But that also created some opportunities to take what you see as kind of a tired traditional library and really create a new learning center at the heart of the school that fit with the way they were teaching students and fit with the programming and instruction in the space, in addition to right sizing the building.
And was daylight.
Yes, and was daylight.
Oh, yeah. So talking a little bit about how. Now, in your, in the response, we gave you a rather detailed process for what we would do with you. We just want you to know that we are, we recognize the uniqueness of each client and each community. So we made a proposition to you, but we also know that we need to align what we do with your expectations and your budget. So we're certainly open to any discussion changes as part of our first step, which is to plan the plan. But in general, what we are very good about and what we really want to do with you is a community-based design process. This is focused on your vision, it's about your learners, it's collaborative and inclusive, it supports the learning community, it takes a holistic approach, it integrates the best of next as, well, whatever, next century. And it asks the right questions in the right order, and we do that with active listening. And what that does is it builds trust in your community. We've used this process all across the country. Scott and I worked up in St. Cloud, and if we have time, we'll talk a little bit more about that project. But that community was trying to make a decision about building new or renovating an existing 100-year-old high school. It was a hard, hard decision for them, heartfelt, because that was kind of a community showcase, not educationally, but it was, had a presence. But that community-designed process is really critical to what we do. And how do we do that? We do that in a number of ways, but the most important is the design workshop, which is a fun, creative process that includes provocations, it includes activities and exercises.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's an engaging process, and it gives everyone the chance to really come involved in the design process. And we like to say, you know, it's design thinking. We're architects and as designers, we like to think, and our philosophy is we don't come to the table having some preconceived notions about what the solutions might be. Okay? So we come open-minded. The idea that as architects or designers, we're more translators, translators for you to translate your vision, your aspiration, your goal into an architectural language.
Okay, five-minute warning team.
Okay.
So who's involved? Students, parents, teachers, the community members, administrators. Up in Alexandria, we had community members that donated a whole bunch of stuff because they were involved in the process, and they were really enthusiastic about it. This is kind of a generic process of decision-making that we like to share. We will certainly work with you to craft it as it makes sense for you as a community. That task force piece, I know that you've put in place a task force. Sometimes we call that a steering committee. They're helping to guide the process, but the, sorry, trying to talk too fast. The design team side is really that bigger group. In St. Cloud, it was 80 people. Alexandria, it was probably 120. But it's a broad representation of community members that may or may not agree, but they're a part of the conversation so that they understand the results when they're through that. And then the task force makes the recommendations back to the school board. Again, we are willing to work with you to figure out what makes best sense for you.
So you've heard this, I'll say this a few times now, but at Cunningham Group, we like to say, welcome, you know, welcome to the design team.
So when, again, in your response to your RFP, we have laid out seven steps. Those are pretty clear. If you want any explanation about them, we're happy to do that in question and answer. But what we understand the goal to be is to be done with the process in December 2019. And so we've put some timeframes around the seven steps. Again, the first step is to plan, plan to plan, which means we're sitting down with you and really designing this process with you. Okay, team, three and a half minutes. We wanted to share with you St. Paul Public Schools. It's a bigger district than you are. There was a lot of nuances in it. There's 72 schools. We've done master planning at the single-building level up to St. Paul Public Schools, which is probably the largest effort we've done, but everything in between. St. Paul Public Schools did a facility assessment in 2009, and in 2014, they started the master planning process. They started it at the district level, and what was important about that was that they wanted to become a school system rather than a system of schools. So they were looking for some consistency across the district. So we actually started with a group of, what was it, about 60 people?
Yeah, about that.
Community members, parents, students, et cetera, to design a vision statement for their facility effort. And this was really the umbrella by which all other decisions were made, and it was very, very helpful. Everybody bought into it. In addition to the vision, we had principles and standards. Principles were beliefs in what they were doing and how they were doing it. They were related to their strategic plan. And then the standards were actually the physical environment. And what's interesting, there were 47 standards at the building level. They were all self-referential. In other words, all the pictures in this booklet came from St. Paul Public Schools. So they were doing all of this, just not consistently across the district. The variety of spaces, the permanent facilities. And then we have what we called a gap analysis, which then took those standards and measured them against their existing buildings. So we understood, they understood, where were the gaps? Where were the things that they were not able to do or not be able to create for kids? Red is not so good. Green is doing it well, and oranges are in between.
What I like to say is just think about salsa, red being hot and green being mild, and everything else is in between.
And this is something we're proposing that we would do as a part of the process. Good idea.
We just keep going, yeah.
We got 30 seconds. Quick!
Yeah, as Meg mentioned, we were asked in 2014, both Meg and I worked with St. Cloud School District, just to help them create vision for their high school learners. And during that process, much like St. Paul Public Schools, we engaged a community group to help them visualize what they needed and what they currently had, and helped them come to a decision on whether to build new or renovate existing. And just to be super brief, the collaborative community workshop really allowed them to make that tough decision, make that recommendation to the board to let go of turn-of-the-century school in an existing neighborhood in downtown to build new, just because the opportunities outweighed the challenges that still remained even if we've done a major renovation to the existing school. The key takeaway was that, you know, it was done together, it was done collaboratively, it was transparent, and it allowed them really to, you know, no matter how difficult the decision, it allowed them to make that decision because they were part of that process.
Cut me off, Scott.
Yep. So we talked about this being the roadmap for the future. You know, it really is about if you're ready to be on this journey and start helping, start packing with us. So just consider these questions, you know, what was important to bring along with you? What might go of, you know, no longer need, and what might you add? So with that, we'd just like to say thank you and open up for questions.
Good. Thank you very much. I think what we'll do at this point, before each of the directors here, there's a list of areas, many of which you've covered, but what I want to do is kind of systematically they can look at that and see if there are particular areas they want you to elaborate on. And then there may be a couple of questions that come that are spontaneous, and we're asking members to make sure, not only to ask you that, but then to carry it over to our next two sessions. So with that, are there questions that directors have? Somebody want to start us off?
Should we follow the question first?
I think so. That might be one way to do it.
Did they get those? Did they get them?
Everybody got them.
Did they get them?
I don't think so.
Oh, they did? Okay.
I think they covered most of them. We're winging it.
Sounds like we are, too.
And you've answered, most of these questions you've answered, so I don't know if we need to go straight down, but...
I...
Okay. Jennifer, why don't you start it off?
Just thought it would get it going. First of all, thank you very much for being here. I visited Alexandria, so it was...
Oh, excellent.
It's beautiful, beautiful project. Our community has gone through some tough times in recent years. Could you provide a specific example of how you would go about reaching consensus among a group of individuals with a wide variety of different viewpoints? You touched on it a little bit there, but I do want to ask this of every applicant, so if it's okay, if you could answer that again?
Yeah. You want to talk about St. Cloud?
Yeah.
Because that was very painful for them.
Yeah, it was painful for them. It was a very difficult decision to let go of a tech high school, which is in downtown neighborhood. And the process we went through is, it was probably an entire summer that we spent, five workshops or thereabouts. A process that, one, included all voices. I think that's what's really important, because when you mentioned that there's a variety, and some people are for and some people are for, you know, against, I think the ability to include voices and engage the people that are even against it from the very beginning. And it really is about, as Meg mentioned before, about putting students first. And so one of the exercises that we do at the very beginning, and we, I glossed over it because I wanted to...
Because you were out of time.
...make sure I hit our time, was forces of change. You know, imagine students 10 years from now, right? What are the forces of change that are going to really affect the way teaching and learning happens maybe 10 years from now? The other one was empathy walks. Thinking about you as a student with the vision of, that was co-created, everyone in that group created this vision, what, how does that vision fit and align with their current facilities? And, you know, looking down that list and criteria. And so it's very, it's very involved and very collaborative, and it gets everyone talking, and it helps, even though, you know, we've heard voices as well after the process that, you know, I came to this and was really, you know, a note person, I was against this, but no one really asked me my opinion and thank you. You asked me my opinion, you gave me a voice, and now I understand why the decision was made. And so we oftentimes ask at the very end, even if you're not totally in support, do you support the community's decision? And so that's one way, and that's one example of, you know, getting over a really challenging and difficult decision.
The other example I would give is, we were working, Scott and I were working in Casper, Wyoming, and there were two comprehensive high schools and one alternative high school, and we, the district was proposing a pathway innovation center, which would bring all those kids together. And it was, we had, oh, we had like 150 people in the room, but it was the kids, it was the students that kept the adults honest and kept them on track. The adults were all worried that because of the two comprehensive high schools, that fights would break out because there was a lot of rivalry between these two high schools. And the kids are sitting at the table going, what are you talking about? We want this. This is so cool. So again, bringing all those voices together really makes a difference, I think, in how people think.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Awesome. I have a question.
Sarah?
Yeah, thank you so much for being here. That was really a great presentation. I have a question about what your thoughts are about as far as timeline. I'm not sure, but I feel like we have a pretty aggressive timeline by wanting to have something that we can present and really discuss by December. Are there things that we as a board can do to help make sure we stay within that timeframe? Is that something that changes a lot? You know, where it goes over, or, you know, do you have total control over that? Or can you just speak to how do we manage the timeline?
So the biggest issue would be getting people involved over the summer.
Okay.
Because in our experience, it's hard to get people to the table in summertime because they're just not engaged in the school stuff.
Okay.
So that might be something as we plan the plan, we look at, how do we, how do we manage that piece of it?
Okay.
And that may affect the timeline. If you tell us we've got a, you know, a drop-dead date, December 2019, we will help you get there. That is, that's what we can do.
Okay.
But we're going to need to navigate those workshops and making sure that we get enough people, the right people, to the table at the right time.
Okay, okay.
Any other thoughts?
One thing I think we do can say, we can collectively say as a board, we do have a very engaged community, so I think...
Well, that's good.
Even though it's summer, I think we might find that surprisingly a lot, we do have a lot of people are really wanting to participate, so...
Excellent. Teachers...
Provide them food, and they'll contribute.
Yeah. That's right.
Liz?
And when you were talking about the project you did at St. Paul, when you had facilities and you were looking at older facilities versus newer facilities, in our... and you were looking at older facilities versus newer facilities, in our situation, we have empty facilities and we have facility needs. So how would you start, how would you frame that whole? Would you tour facilities and...
Yes, a part of the analysis and evaluation part is touring the facilities. It was not clear in the RFP if you wanted facility assessments done on your buildings or if that had already taken place. So I think that we would certainly be looking at creating standards with your community and then analyzing the buildings for standards in terms of educational needs. There is another layer about maintenance and, you know, what's broken and what needs to be fixed piece that we would be happy to talk about more in terms of the facility assessment piece. But again, we just, it wasn't clear in the RFP that those were the services you wanted, so we did not suggest that in the RFP.
One of the things that you mentioned that caught my interest was you had the chart, your salsa chart?
Salsa chart, yep.
And you talked about the gap analysis?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Can you elaborate a little bit more on your gap analysis? What would make the chart? What would make red? What would make green?
So we have this list of 47 standards in St. Paul Public Schools, and each of the standards had a number of attributes. Handicapped accessibility, you know, all buildings need to be accessible to all. What does that mean? That means that restrooms are accessible, that your pathway to your playgrounds are accessible, that your front door is accessible, that you have handicap parking. So there's a number of little tick boxes that you need to do as you're thinking about handicap accessibility. If you don't meet some of those, then you turn from green to red. And the question is at what scale? And so if you miss, you know, and I'm making this all up, you know, it's a little more elaborate than this, but if you miss four out of five, you're going to be in that dark orange range, where you want to be. And so when you take a look at all those different pieces and you aggregate them together, you can help talk about what are the priorities across the district? Which buildings really are lacking what we need?
And part of the comment builds off of what Liz said there, because she talked about, we have some buildings already that aren't being used. But also, I think one of the questions we want on your table that will come up are all, are buildings adequate?
Right.
And so those type of gap analysis becomes extremely important. Shelley?
Thank you. Could you talk a little bit about what you bring to the board? What's the finished product? Is it just one option that the board says yes or no on? Do you bring different options? How do you do that?
So it's a part of the process. I'm going to talk a little bit about a district we're doing master planning with in Greeley, Colorado, right now. And we have gone through a process with that community. It's a community group. We're up to our last workshop right now. And the big issue for them is they've got 154 portables across their district. So it's, it's a different answer for them than it's going to be for you. And it may be crystal clear once we get into it, or it may be a little muddy and there may be more than one option. But it's going to really depend on what the critical issues are that your community sees, not that we see sitting here having, you know, researched you, but that your community is able to express.
Yeah, okay. Can I just ask a follow-up?
Just anybody who hasn't spoken that wishes to?
Is that just a follow-up? Go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up. So then, at the end, would there possibly be like option A, option B, option C, like a whole, like sort of menu of choices, or...
And it's also going to depend on your budget and your appetite for what you're trying to do. In that district, they cannot tackle everything because they simply don't have the money. They're looking now at a 10-year plan that's going to have a first referendum that's going to be probably in the order of $450 million. They're a bigger district, and they have this issue that they haven't taken care of their buildings over many years, and they have this capacity issue that they're really struggling with right now. So out of that $450 million, some of it's going to deferred maintenance, but a lot of it's going to do a replacement high school and a new middle school.
That is a big appetite.
Yeah.
Mark?
When you've dealt with districts that are comprised of many different communities, how do you engage and seek input from underrepresented demographics, including trying to build consensus with demographics that may not necessarily be fully represented on a task force? How do you go about seeking that engagement?
So I'm answering all the questions. Do you want to answer some questions, Ben?
In doing that process in St. Paul, we certainly had challenges in creating opportunities for everyone to have a voice and creating space, you know, meetings and setting things up such that people were available and able to come and join us and have a voice that way. And so we've looked at developing alternative means of feedback other than just a meeting, tailoring times, locations, being really thoughtful about, you know, who are we trying to get at the table and what do we have to do, or what do we want to, what do we want to change than just saying, well, it's going to be at 3:00 so that teachers can come, or it's going to be at 6:00 so families can come, and, you know, well, we'll pick the time and we try. But really digging into who's being underserved and what do we have to do to give them a voice and give them an opportunity to be at the table in the conversations.
So we talked about childcare. We talked about providing transportation. We talked about food. Your, they had councils, what were they called?
District councils.
The district councils.
Neighborhood organizations, reaching out to them to try and bring people that maybe don't have a direct connection to the school but still are impacted by the decisions that the district makes in their communities. So really trying to broaden the reach.
And then do you, as a policy, if you are chosen as the group, watch board meetings to see like what's happening within our district? Is that part of what plays into your meetings, or it's just, you're just concerned, are you just focused on what's happening at your meetings?
It would depend, I think, on what you see as important for us. If there's something that you are pointing to saying, you know, you need to understand this, we will be there. The, the facility planning process is a great opportunity. And usually, we, with our workshop process, people are eager to engage because they see it as an opportunity. But I guess I'm not clear exactly what you might be, you know, we're certainly available to do presentations. In the case of St. Paul, we did this overall district planning piece, and then we did site-based workshops that included not just one school, but a series of schools that would, like a series of elementaries that would feed into a middle and then into a high school. We did those on a Saturday morning, and each group had like 12 people involved, and we actually talked about what their priorities were as a school. And we were able to kind of drill down into what the issues were at a site level that way. So there are all sorts of ways we can do this.
And I think it's also about, you know, working with the task force and structuring a process that responds to the issues that your district wants to address through this process.
Shelley?
We believe in community engagement, and we have a model that we really feel works, but we're going to tailor it because, as Meg said, every school district is different. And, you know, we want to address Stillwater's issues through this process.
Talk about your relationship with the board. Is it, if we choose you, what are the next steps and how are we, is it just that we're involved at the end? How do you usually work with the school boards?
So anytime the board meets together, it's an open meeting, so the, again, goes back to the process you want to use with us. Typically, we'll work with the task force, and then we might do some board workshops with you. But it's, it's up to you how you want to work with us. You know, we're happy to make presentations at any time. We're happy to have you involved in the work, in the task force and in the design workshops. But, you know, there are certain rules you need to follow as a board, so whatever works for you, works for us.
Thank you.
Along those lines, what do you see most commonly as far as board representation in the task force?
Typically, we'll see, like at St. Cloud, it was like two members of the board?
One or two board members is kind of pretty typical.
Yeah, so it's not a quorum. So they're able to participate and then bring back to the full board what it is that they're seeing. In Greeley, Colorado, board members have been invited to all the design committee meetings, but they don't always show up. So I don't know that we actually have ever had a quorum of board members there. Again, it's, sometimes the conversation is different with board members in the room, and that's, you know, that's again, something you need to kind of consider. At what point do you want to be there? At what point don't you want to be there so that the decision happens without you? And that sounds bad, but it depends on your community, really.
Pretty quiet group.
We have time, still.
Mark? How are we doing timelines?
You have one more?
Well, if we're good on time, I'm good.
It's 10 to 5 according to your clock.
Yeah.
Okay. Off of me, then. I don't know how much research you've done on our district in particular, but if you have, can you comment on what you see as the challenges that face this particular task force in coming to consensus on the long-range planning?
So what I know is that you closed two of your smaller elementaries and that that was a painful process. So I'm wondering if trust is an issue in the community? And if it is, I think that we can help you get from here to there by having a very transparent and open process. I'm speaking without intimate knowledge. I'm speaking just what I've read.
Thank you. Other questions?
Did we pass the test?
Check in on Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us. We really appreciate being here.
And again, we apologize for the late start.
Not a problem. And again, if anybody wants to talk to Judy Hoskins, she will be in town later this week, and she'd be happy to answer any questions you might have of her directly. She apologizes again for not being here.
You did a good job jumping in. Well done.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
What was the question you asked?
Testing.
Greetings. What we'll do, Dean, is we're just going to go around the table, and we'll introduce everybody here and their role. And then if you want to do that for your team member or have them introduce themselves, that would be fine. And we're starting at approximately 3 minutes, 2. You get 20 minutes to make a presentation, and then 20 minutes for questions from us. And we'll try to stick to that. Okay, thank you. Denise, if you'll start off.
Good evening. Denise Pontrelli, Superintendent.
Mark Burns, Director.
Liz Weisberg, Treasurer.
Sarah Tivlin, Clerk.
Mike Petagic, Chair.
Shelley Pierce, Vice Chair.
Tina Riley, Director.
Jennifer Palatier, Director.
Well, thank you so much for having us. We are ATSR. We are architects, planners, and engineers. So we're a firm built for your job. 98% of what we do at ATSR are schools. Then we always have a couple churches to keep things right. So we brought specialists here. We work together. We go to the drinking fountain next to each other. We rub shoulders when we're getting coffee. We work as a team, like a basketball team. You'll see we have technology, mechanical, electrical, interiors, all the different elements that you need for teaching and learning. We've brought them all together. So I am very happy to be here personally because 30 years ago, I designed your high school right out of college. I was put on a team. You know, I'm embarrassed to say, all the sketches, I think I left them at home, but I found some slides. So I took pictures of some slides here. But, you know, as a team, we designed it. But I've always been very proud of that beautiful school that you have. And so I want to thank you for letting me be part of your life so long time ago. So, as I said, I'm Dean Benega. I'm the Vice President. I'm an architect. I'm a facility planner for education. I've been in the business a long time. I've been doing a lot of these studies, a lot of high schools, a lot of elementaries, a lot of middle schools. So this is probably my 12th to 15th time through this process. So it's not new. And what we hope to show you is that we're good at it, we're organized, we'll have some fun with it, but getting that data together, getting together in a collaborative way, you, the community, the students, the staff, everybody, you know? We organize it, but you come out of it with something different than what we would just give you or what you would just give yourselves.
Hi, my name is Cara Rais, and I'm an associate partner and interior designer. I'm also listed as one of the facilitators for this process and also as your future-ready design person. So what that means is I really have a passion for educational facilities. I spend a lot of time talking to our clients and seeing what others are doing. And what I hope to do is bring that information to you as just another piece of the puzzle as you're working through the process.
Hi, I'm Nancy Labissinere. I am an architect and also a part of that whole planner and facilitator process. I've also been around ATSNR quite a long time, and I've seen a lot from the standpoint of messy renovations and all sorts of those things that I can have learned from and can apply to your projects to be able to make sure that we get those things up front and figure them out early in the process so that we don't have to deal with them at a change order after the fact. So I can help apply those for you.
Hi, I'm Pat Collins. I'm a mechanical engineer. I'm relatively new relative to Dean, but however, I did just first get through my first full round of this process. And the very first thing I did when I started there is I assisted in a facilities analysis for a group like yourselves. We got through that. The school got their master plan, and we helped design and ultimately build the first round of their master plan. So I've done a number of analyses since then and designs, and I'm really excited to be here.
Mark Tyson. I'm a technology designer, fairly new at ATSR, but I have about 16 years in the industry. Telecommunications as an emphasis.
I'm Anna Fournier. I am the Marketing Coordinator at ATSNR. I'm just here to keep them on track. Good luck.
And our Director of Mechanical Engineering, Blaine Parkos, couldn't make it tonight. He's with his family on a planned vacation. So Blaine and Patrick worked together on the mechanical engineering side. As you know how important fresh air, oxygen, et cetera, is for our students and our staff. So ATSR, we're 75 years old. I'm part of the fifth-generation ownership. Many here are part of the sixth-generation ownership. We've basically focused on schools. We've built ourselves around the school client. And so we find that having that specialty gives us our full attention on studying what schools are doing in the next 50 years. So we spend a lot of time, Cara and I probably the most, on national organizations, going to seminars, trying to keep up with what... When a child is going to have a job that doesn't exist, how do you design a school? And that's always our challenge, is what is the right way to design the schools so they're flexible, so they're usable? And when we come in and work for you, we're not the pushy type to say, "You have to do it this way. This is how you have to do it." But what we'll do is bring you examples from other clients that we've had, from other examples we've learned around the world, really, and say, "This is what others are considering." And like anything else, you kind of find your comfort zone on that bar of risky to conservative. And I think it's a great advantage to having a school firm as ours to bring those innovations to you.
I think you did a really nice job with this document. Just wanted to recognize that. One of the things I really liked that, in addition to the 4C, is you've got the self-advocacy component there. I think that's really great. And it's just awesome to see what a portrait of a Stillwater student looks like.
So the process, okay? We call it GEMS. The simple way to think of it is, is we have to gather all of the information. We have to get all of your plans together, all of your demographic information, all of your mechanical information. We do a facility study early. We do an educational analysis early, okay? All that we want to look at, we'll get into what it is, but we've got to look at each building, okay? What's the educational adequacy of one of the elementaries? Is it just rooms down hallways that are trying to serve the diverse needs of students? Or do you have some various-sized learning spaces that are integrated within the classroom arrangement? So then we get in to the group work, okay? So we gathered all the information, then we get into the committee work where we come in and teach the committee all the things we learned. Pat will do his facility analysis. You know, Mark will do his technology part. Nancy will do all the architectural, you know, the roofs, the walls, the floors. And Cara and I will do the educational part. So we bring that all together. Add that to your demographics, okay? You're growing what, 3.4%? 4.3%? You know, congratulations. And so you start to put those puzzles together, and you bring that to your committee. And you say, "Okay, here's an option we can look at. Here's another option." So I'll get into that a little more. Then we confirm with the board. We confirm with the community. We kind of bring it together into a resolution for the board with a lot of support and reasoning of why you're doing what. We support you in graphics then later if you choose to go with a bond referendum, et cetera. So, you know, we can go as fast as you want or as slow as you want, but it's kind of a, you know, six-month timeframe. You usually have five to six meetings with your community. Probably takes us two to three months to get all that engineering done early and start looking at it.
So what we're looking for with the task force is really looking for a diverse group of stakeholders. We really want a nice representation of the community with parents and business leaders, even students sometimes on these committees. As Dean mentioned, you know, several different meetings, and that can grow from six, plus or minus. We want this to be a collaborative process. And like Dean said, he really talked about a lot of this, but we're just reviewing a lot of the data. We're presenting, we're working collaboratively, and we're solving.
So this is an educational analysis. You'll probably see it done many different ways by the many different, the two other firms you're going to show. But one baseline that we like to do is to color things in red that are below the size standards that the state has set, okay? So real simple, I can do a plan quick. This is Chippewa Falls High School. We just did their $200 million study that they resulted in a new elementary for $65 million, and Patrick was a big part of that. Anyway, you can start to see the red. These are some gyms that are too small. The administration, you've got some of the science. So what it does is with your eight, 10, 11, 12 buildings, you can get a snapshot quickly about how the size of spaces are working. Because I'm sure you're not any different than the district next door. You're going to have just as many kids in an English class as the next district. But if your classrooms are small for those English students, then you're having some pressure that maybe the other district isn't having. So the amount of kids, the size of the room makes a big difference. We also start to look at, what I touched on earlier, says teaching and learning here. Individual space, teaming space, large group, okay? We circle it if there's a concern. Okay, well, they don't have any. They're built in the '60s. They didn't have breakout areas and teaming areas and small group support. So boom, right there, you can identify... You don't have to do anything with it, but we want to identify it and teach you what some of the options are. So this is a nice way to get, you know, kind of a baseline. We're also going to study your section counts, you know, where your overcrowding is, you know, according to your eight-out-of-eight sections in certain high school spaces. And, you know, we also look at where you're inefficient. Where rooms, we'll color them in blue if they're too big. Hey, you're wasting space. Hey, you know, we did a job in central Wisconsin where they were wasting space, and we reconfigured everything, got them a lot of breakout and collaborative space, and we didn't hurt the curriculum at all.
So just another piece of that, too, is we're really talking with the different users of the building, too. We're sitting down with principals and staff members and conducting different groups. So we're just wanting to, we're trying to gather as much input as we can.
Yeah, the questionnaire we'll give to all of the schools, okay? So usually, we get the best information from the principals, okay? They know what the heck's going on. So we send them the same questionnaire. A high school questionnaire will be different than an elementary. So that teacher or that principal can really spend some time getting information from others in the school, but putting down some very valuable information that will go into the report, okay? We also sit down with each school. Cara and I will go sit down, and we'll just say, "How you doing? What's good here?" You know, we'll have that plan in front of them. Might even be before we get to that stage. "How's the school working? What's your biggest problems?" You know, we need to get to know everything about it so that we can come back and teach you. We can teach the committee.
So one of the things that Dean's kind of alluded to is, you know, a lot of these schools across the country really have been built with, you know, just classrooms lined along the corridor. There's none of those additional spaces beyond the classroom for teams or for individuals. So this is a graphic and kind of an idea we came up for CEFPI, which is now Association for Learning Environments. It's basically one of these educational think tanks. We attend an annual conference, and we were selected to bring this concept to life. So the idea is, how do we deal with all these aging existing facilities around, and how do we bring these up to 20-year learning? So this is kind of the baseline. We introduced a tiered approach where realizing that you can't do everything at once. So maybe Tier 1, you know, we're starting to address furniture and technology. You can do amazing things and really impact the learning environment with those two things. Even, you know, this space here, I was noticing earlier just how flexible it is. Putting casters on tables and chairs is great. So maybe we're doing a partial replacement here. Then you bump up to Tier 2, and that's really doing that total replacement, you know, really rethinking every learning environment. And maybe all the learning environments don't need to be the same because, you know, different classes have different needs, and there's different teaching styles. But the other idea is just trying to really meet the needs of every individual student, too. Tier 3, you know, we're starting to address the shapes and sizes of the spaces, starting to introduce some smaller group spaces, and maybe a breakout space where teams can come and gather. And then finally, Tier 4 is just taking a fresh look at that square footage. You know, we've got enclosed spaces. We've got kind of open spaces, but there's spaces to gather as a large group, spaces for the individual, spaces for teams, a lab space to get messy, but just really rethinking that area.
Now we get into the nuts and bolts part. So, and I'm a detail-oriented person, so this thing really fits me well. And I enjoy trying to get into the nuts and bolts of all the pieces of your building and figure out what needs work. And this is also a collaborative process because we're not just not going to go in there and go, "Oh, this is..." You know, it's really a matter of even having that same process with your facilities, people and the people that use your building on a regular basis, not just what we see, but what they observe and what your history has been with the building. So that's just as an important aspect of this whole process. We're also working with you to define the parameters for some of these evaluations that are somewhat subjective, especially related to aesthetic items, because, again, we're not going to assume for you what is good and what is bad. We want to know what your comfort level is with various levels of finishes and those kind of things. So, but we bring all of our expertise from all our disciplines together to look through all of these items, and we do our, we have the list of everything that's on here. We quantify it all. We do cost estimates for every item. We prioritize every item with you, again, not us by ourselves, but working together with you to help prioritize, whether it's immediate priority that's going to get done in the first year or two, Priority 2 might be a few years out. If you want to do Priority 3, that's more longer-term planning. So we've got priorities, and we also are doing other sorts of sorting that might be funding sources such as LTFM or bond or lease levy or whatever your other funding sources may be. So we can really look at all of those different pieces, how they fit together to really help you get the best solution that isn't just what the facilities guy wants or just what the other guy wants, but really something that meets altogether those things and marries what we're looking at from the educational adequacy standpoint with what's happening on the facility side and get the right fit for your district and for each building in that way.
A lot of those same things that Nancy was talking about there apply to mechanical systems. Like Dean was saying, I'll work alongside Blaine Parkos, our Director of Mechanical Engineering, and we'll evaluate the quality efficiencies and the effectiveness of your mechanical systems. The goal is to provide you with a list of improvements that optimize your future investment. These things can be as trivial as just replacing exhaust fans or broken-down cabinet-unit heaters that are making too much noise. To more involve things such as evaluating two separate systems that you go to. One will be higher in capital costs but have lower efficiencies or higher efficiencies, and the other will be lower in capital cost and have less efficiencies, kind of like the study on the right there. You can see on the bottom right, we evaluated a chilled water system versus packaged DX equipment, and we showed the overall capital cost at the bottom and then the annual savings in the energy cost budget above it. And we found out that, you know, the more expensive system would provide a 10-year payback. So these are some things, some exercises that we have with you guys to provide more efficient and effective systems. The other thing is just sitting down and saying, "Is that gym being used how we want it to?" There's an air handling unit inside of a, you know, competition gym, you know? Is that something you want? Or do you want to operate that gym more effectively? So we look at all these things, and we kind of decide on ways to budget to meet your guys' future finances and operations.
So, technology. I know I don't have much time here, so I'll make it quick. If I could switch gears really quick and get really personal with you guys. I have three kids, 10, 4, and 2. As you guessed, this is my princess. Her name is Willow. She's two. She loves her iPad time, mostly because her older brothers get plenty of it. But the point of me showing this to you and how it correlates is that one of the best parts about my job is that I get to think about my kids at the same time. When I think about them and I'm doing a design, I think about their safety during the day. I also think about how are they learning? Do they have the right tools to be set up for success? And furthermore, does the staff have the tools that they need to be effective and efficient as well? So when we talk about facility analysis, there are three main areas of focus that we'll look at. The first being physical security, so your video surveillance, access control, mass notification systems, just to make sure, are we up to par on those? If not, then we can talk improvements from there. The second being audiovisual, which you guys have plenty of it here. You're doing really well. But, you know, what are some of those tools? And that's what I'm referring to as audiovisual, be the tools. And the last piece of that is infrastructure, which is essentially the foundation for your physical security and your AV. If you don't have a robust network backing up these systems, it's really hard to function in that manner. So, and, you know, as Pat was mentioning about mechanical, maybe it's as simple as us just replacing and cleaning up some of your closets. Over time, as you have contractors come in, they might be pulling cable, and it's just a mess, what we refer to in the industry as a rat's nest. So it could be as simple as us just coming in and cleaning things up as well.
Isn't it neat just to see the passion and the specialism? Isn't it neat just to see the passion and the specialization? The paths that they've all been on are very similar, but then very different. And, you know, what I love about working with them and working for schools is that we really do believe we're doing a good thing in this world. We're really trying to help students. We're really trying to help the staff and the administration and communities. And so we're not, we haven't shown you a lot of examples of our work. We have that in our proposal. We had pictures after this that showed kind of graphic illustrations of how we show options to the group, but it's probably not as important as really what we're trying to do. We're trying to, we're trying to balance engineering and, and design, okay? We're trying to be real strong with engineering and real strong with design. Bring it into your needs, help facilitate it to get a result that you're comfortable with. I commend you for backing up and doing this study instead of just putting an addition on because as a graphic might show, this might be the, the baseline, the red are overcapacity, the green are elementaries and that are undercapacity. You, you go to the next one and you start to see option one. The first easy option is put an addition onto everything that needs it within its boundary areas to get, because after we analyze the building for capacity, just because you have 22 rooms doesn't mean it's 22 times 25. How good are those rooms? Do we need to take some rooms offline so that the children that are in that new elementary that's beautiful and has all the amenities have equity with the older building? You know, we try to flatten the whole situation. So you can just start to see, we'll put additions on this remodeling, and then you go to the next option. So the first option might be just put additions on everything. The second might be maybe close a building and shift things to this building or build a new building. And so option three then starts to put some of the elementaries in the old middle school, maybe the middle school and the high school and a new high school, or, you know, they just looked at a lot of different things. We'll usually have 15 options, kind of go through it with the group. We give them little dots to vote on them. We get input from them so that you start to build a case. So you can go on to that. So our fee is in the, in the proposal. We kind of look at your, your district as a square footage. I think you have 1.4 million square feet and 4 cents, 5 cents. So, you know, that includes the, the committee work and this and that. But this is what we like to do, this is what we do every day. You know, I have some examples here that, of other schools that, you know, we've done the master plans for. We got Anoka, we just passed 250 million with Anoka. Minnetonka, we do their work. I said Chippewa Falls, Burnsville, Tri-City, a bid in Rochester. I married a girl from Wisconsin, so I do all our Chippewa Falls, and I've done all the new Richmond's buildings in the last 15 years, a new high school and everything. So we thank you very much for letting us present.
Thank you all. What we're going to do at this point is for the next 20 minutes, we're going to take questions from board members. Some of those will be very, very similar, and they've been instructed that we ask the prior presenters and probably will come up again in the third one. And probably a few here and there are going to be unique to your group. But again, thank you for a very, very full and complete look, and it's very intriguing.
Thank you.
With that, is there somebody you'd like to lead off? Jennifer, you want to?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to say I've got a sophomore in college at the U in engineering, and I think she's got a new job opportunity now with this. I didn't, excited to hear that.
Isn't that great?
She's in systems engineering, so.
Yeah.
All right. Our community has gone through some tough times in recent years, as you may not be aware. Could you please provide a, a specific example as to how you would go about reaching consensus among a group of people that have a wide variety of different viewpoints? You touched a little bit about the dots, but I'm thinking of just really strong divergent viewpoints. How do you go about reaching consensus?
Well, the rule is for answering questions, whoever's kind of area it is, we answer. So Kara and I could answer that. I'll start by saying, "We believe in getting everybody in the room," okay? You have yes. Every project has, or let's, let's talk about a bond referendum. Every community that I've worked in in 30 years, 30% of the residents are going to say yes no matter what, and 30% are going to say no no matter what. Every community is the same. It's that middle 40%. Can you get 20% of them to agree? Now, it's, it's no, because you need 50.1%, okay? That's always the trick in any, any study, any referendum preparation. You're never going to, you're never going to convince the bottom 30% that don't want to do anything. I've never, okay? But it's that middle. So we like to get, we like to get everybody in a room. So we will have town halls if you want. So we'll have a town hall for a certain school boundary, okay? And we'll let them tear into us. I love it, you know? Just tell me what's wrong. And we'll maybe present some of the things that we know about it. But basically, it's so easy to have a meeting and to ask, "What's wrong? What would you like? What do you think you need?" And then we record the information. We like to use dots. It's so fun to give everybody five dots. We might, we might have, let's say you have 50 people at a meeting and it's really supercharged. You put five people per table and you have them, those five people write down what they really think they need, okay? So now I've got five sheets up there that represent, you know, or 10 sheets that represent 50 people, okay? Some of them are going to say the same things, but I give everybody in the audience five little dots that have sticky on them. And I say, "You go vote on the five things you want, or you put all five dots on one thing." So all of a sudden, everybody kind of gets quiet and, you know, they stand up and they start, and then all of a sudden, everybody's putting dots on, and you get done, and you kind of have this graphic. And it kind of starts to show you at this school, at this time, this is what they're thinking. They wrote it, they put the dots on. And what's so nice is the others, okay? It doesn't matter what I see, but the others in the group are starting to say, "Hey, my friends are thinking this." That makes sense. Maybe they came into the meeting not thinking that at all. So you do that to all the groups, then you do that as a collaborative with the committee. And it's, it's really powerful to ask, listen, record, get them involved. It's a blast. We just did it the other night.
And sometimes that dots actually is really effective. For a long time, I was kind of like, "Yeah, but we could do it online."
We do different things.
But the dots are great, they really are instant. But sometimes we will use online tools, too, such as forums or poll everywhere. So you can kind of get a pulse in the room, especially with larger groups, which is really nice. Another thing that we didn't really mention yet is at the beginning of these task force sessions, too, we like to spend a little bit of time defining what consensus means to this group. You know, is it everybody agreeing? Is it a certain percentage agreeing? So getting that out of the way upfront early is helpful.
Thank you very much.
Respect, yeah.
Thank you.
Just, Kara, a quick follow-up. What, how would you define consensus?
For me? I think it's a kind of a majority. I think you come up with a, a percentage. It's hard to get every single person on board, but I think you want the overall group agreeing to what that percentage is.
We ask them, "Do you want it to be 70%? You know, do you want it to be 60?" You know? We tell them right away, "It's your group, it's your project, it's your community, you know? We're here trying to help you, but we're not going to get 100. We're not probably going to get 80. What do you think of 70? Uh, 65?" You know? Just so that then when it happens, there's respect. So people aren't saying, "Oh, come on, no," you know? But it's, people are great.
Thank you. Shelley?
Thank you. You talked a little bit about the options, and you might have 15 options at one point. How do you, how do you go about narrowing that? And then what comes to the board?
Okay. Well, each option that I didn't show you has a cost to it, okay? So we'll look at each, like option one, the first option I always do, as I said, is put an addition onto whatever needs it to make it right for the amount of people that are going to be in it in 10 years with your demographic growth, okay? So that's the first key is it's not today, it's 10 years from now. Because if you only plan for five, you're going to be going back for referendums fast, you won't even think. I mean, this takes time. So hopefully, your, your demographic report goes out 10 years. It's going to show some schools, you know, and as a committee, we have to talk about, do you blanket it 4.3% across the board? Or do we look, you know, we know there's growth, you know, in the south, I think it is here. So, you know, that's all part of the intuitive part. So we have the options, we have the costs, okay? So each option has context to it. It's really easy to show people four beautiful cars and say, "Which one do you want?" Well, then all of a sudden, you put the price tag up and they say, "Well, I'd really like that one, but I think this is my best choice." So I think with cost context, it helps. And to tell you the truth, we'll do the dots, we'll do online survey, we'll talk about what components. Well, first, we'll get them together and do a pros and cons for each option, okay? Option one, we present it. Then we put them into their groups and we say, "Okay, list the pros and list the cons for option one." Well, and then we put those up. Then option two, list the pros and cons. So what I like to do is get something substantive, well, that's a big word, for each option, cost, design, and reasons they're good or bad. So after a while, you're really, it's pretty easy, okay? Now, the committee, what the committee comes up with isn't always what the board does. Chippewa Falls, the committee went for all 200 million, and they wanted a referendum. And the board let them, kind of. And then the board later said, you know, "That wasn't right." That's fine. At least they respected the committee, okay? So the board took it, said, then they had School Perceptions do a survey. School's perception said, "Your community can support 65 million." And School Perception's, I do a lot of Wisconsin work, so they're pretty close. So the board said, "Okay, we're going to do 65 million, and these are the top five things that the survey said we should address, a new elementary, replace, you know, Stilson Elementary, do the new mechanical at the high school, middle school, a STEM addition to the high school, and improve the teaching and learning spaces in the middle school." So boom, 65 million, it was easy. But it wouldn't have been real without doing that first work first. So now they have a $200 million master plan that they just picked 65 off, and the rest they can do through survey work again. So it's critical to do it early, do the big picture, and sometimes the board has to micromanage, which is just fine. That's why you're here. But sometimes you'll completely agree with the committee. So it's like life. It's not the same over and over.
How would you frame or explore a discussion around, "We have empty facilities at the same time we have waiting lists"? Is that something that you would tour the facility and bring that back? Or would you have committee members join you on those tours? How do you handle that?
I hate to keep answering these. I'm sorry. So every district has growth and decline within the district, right? Okay, so it's not anything new. Everybody in the district knows where it's crowded and where there's room. Every, you know, you've probably changed boundaries quite a few times, and that's always part of it. So it's part of the study. You know, the worst thing on a study for a board or superintendent is to talk about closing a school, you know? It's so political. So sometimes we stay away from it because it's just, it's suicide. But sometimes we address it, and sometimes we're the bad guy for bringing that information forward to why you should. So, you know, boundary shifts, you know, new schools, shifting schools, like I said, a common thing is sometimes you, you might shift some of the weaker buildings that Patrick had 6 million for mechanical and a million for electrical, and Nancy had 2 million to fix. Instead of spending that 10 million to fix that old building up, it isn't, it doesn't have a lot of students in it, maybe you, you bring that offline, you don't really close it, you just shift the kids into a different facility, shift them over, maybe you, maybe you go into the middle school, one of the middle schools for the elementary kids and build a new middle school. I don't know, it's just one of the 15 options. So, yes, we deal with how many people are in each building and how effectively are you spending every dollar for, you know, your, your students.
Shelley?
Can you talk about some of the challenges you've had in bringing groups to consensus? If you've had any challenges with that?
You know, there's challenges, yeah. Ever been to Wayawega, Wisconsin? It's kind of a Viappleton, it's a tourist town. I was hired, Kara and I were hired, and then the Superintendent Scott Black was just a beautiful person, is. He had a vision of what he wanted to do to this high school that he's had that hasn't been touched since 1969 when it was built. Nothing, okay? Patrick, you're a big part of that, too. Half the board didn't want to do anything, and half the board wanted to do something. So you talk about, so we went through the process. Scott was very diligent about, and we went through it. They witnessed some of the things that came out of it. The next thing you know, after going through the whole process, actually listening to what the community was saying through trying to reach consensus, the board passed a $21 million referendum, and I'd love to show you how beautiful that high school is now. We put an auditorium on, we took the old auditorium, made it a cafeteria in the middle of the building, we built a STEM wing that ties to the industrial tech, put a weight room that ties to an auxiliary gym, you know, the, and carved out the middle of the building so there's breakout. But just all the things that that building really needed, that the board, they didn't, half of them, they just sat there. And boy, after a while, they, everybody teaches each other. So I don't ever consider a challenge to get consensus because it really becomes apparent, I think.
One other thing with that, too, the other thing we like to do is sometimes start with kind of some principles. And, you know, one of them is deferred judgment, you know, of other people. Try and really, truly listen before, you know, you judge. And also deferring judgment on yourself, too, you know? Don't judge yourself, like, don't be afraid to speak up because your idea might be the next great idea that leads to another. So, yeah, there's several principles that we like to share.
Thank you.
Just one observation I'd share with you, this is already mentioned, the fact that probably part of our district, one of the issues is we have buildings that are relatively vacant for the most part. This building is one of those. We also have some buildings, we're not completely sure, but we think so, that are up to snuff. It might be those red buildings or even parts of that building that you've identified. But then also, I think in our district, we have the third component, which is we need additional buildings or additions to those buildings. So I share that kind of as a comment. I'm not trying to pre-stage the response, but I'm saying that's part of who we are, I believe. Other members, comments? Mark?
Sure. So in your work in the past in districts that have a variety of different communities, how do you engage and seek input from all demographics that might be present in that district, including by building consensus with demographics that might not be fully represented on the task force that you're working on? How, how do you go out and seek that, that kind of consensus and buy-in?
You take that, yeah. Many different.
One of the ways is by utilizing some of those online tools, because, I mean, let's face it, a lot of people don't want to participate or don't, maybe don't have time to participate in a committee or even attend a town hall meeting. So, you know, by utilizing these tools and utilizing your existing social networks to really kind of advertise those. But we will also set up shop at different community venues, like different clubs and, you know, sit and listen and just, you know, be wherever the community is. We could set up at the grocery store even to answer questions or, you know, whatever. Wherever you think we need to be, we can help.
It's not easy, and you're not alone with that. It's not easy, and you're not alone with that. You have open houses and you get 12 people. I mean, you guys have been here. You send flyers out and people say, I didn't see them. You know, it's not easy, you know? Like Kara said, you can do online. We found that that school perception route was pretty good for really getting at some real data. But, you know, we can have all the meetings we want. We can invite all the people. But you got a certain group of people that will never come. I just, I do it over and over. But just little tricks of maybe putting questionnaires in all the school offices and have the kids bring it home, mail it, flyers in town, there's just different tricks to try to get information. But it's probably one of the biggest challenges, you know?
One of the questions we have, what do you think in terms of board members being on the task force? Good idea, bad idea?
I love board members, so I never have a problem with if they want to be involved. We typically do have a board member or two on the task force so that they can report back in an indirect way to everybody how it's going. But I've had it where, you know, more than two, you know, have been on the, I guess I've done so many jobs, I've had the whole board, one, none. But it's common, two and at least one. You know, we'll have kind of an executive committee rolling through where there's, you know, typically the board chair, the soup, you know, a key staff member, certain, you know, it depends on who you want, usually business superintendent, board chair. Kind of becomes the executive committee, where you're kind of talking about really the definitive direction that you need to refine some things to. But it's really good to have you all involved. I mean, it's up to you because you're a public entity that you want to kind of listen instead of give input to a point. You're really here to say, what do you think? So you'll definitely be part of it electronically. We'll be sending you pictures of all the dots, and you'll see the online survey results. And, you know, Kara will do the Survey Monkey or whichever. So it's up to you. Yeah.
Yeah, hi. Thank you so much for being here. This has been really interesting. I have a question about what your thoughts are as far as our timeline. You know, here we are, almost May. We really want to try to get to someplace where we have at least some options by like next November, December, whatever. I know you had it in your presentation. Do you feel like there's, are there factors that play into whether or not that's actually feasible? Do they sometimes run over? How much control do we really have over getting it done in that timeframe? And is it, or, you know, what can we do as a board to try to make sure we get everything done the way we should in that amount of time?
I think you're in great shape. I mean, we move, we work for a lot of different groups, as you said, you know, churches and small districts, big districts. So it comes down to, we always say, we'll work as fast as you can. Because it takes meetings to get progress. So if you want to have a meeting every two weeks with the committee, piece of cake. Usually, it's about every three weeks. So, you know, we're going to do our engineering thing first. I'd say a couple months, you know, unless you want to stay tonight.
Hey, I'm here.
You're here, okay. Patrick's in. No, but, you know, and to get to all the schools, to get all the information, to get kind of our analysis done. So a couple months there. And then we just set up the committee every two weeks. If you want to go faster, every three weeks, even three weeks with this amount of time is fine. You just watch the inertia of those five or six meetings with the committee. I've done it in three before where they really hit early. And you kind of end up, and then you bring it to the board. Board might change it. We bring it to the community after that, and they might change. Should we come back? We work maybe a couple more meetings, and we get it where everybody feels like, okay. You know, it's not perfect. There's a lot of diversity here. But I really think it addresses the next 10 to 50 years of our, where do we want to go? You know, it's not about, it's not only about tomorrow. It's about 50 years from now. Where's this district going to be? What do you want it to be? So.
Okay, I think we'll end it there.
Liz, is it pressing?
No, I just, it just kind of went along with the board question. I just asked it to the last group, but really quick. It sort of relates to board members on the committee. But in addition to that, do you watch or attend board meetings to see like what's happening within the community apart from the process you're going through, too?
We, we don't go to every board meeting. If you're talking about it, we usually, sometimes we'll present to you what, you know, an update. If you want us at every board meeting, you know, Patrick would come.
I think that's a seniority.
I'm sorry, you said short.
He has three kids, I have seven, so.
Well, I'm going to thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You gave us a very intriguing look, and I appreciate everything and the time you took in coming. And we should know on Thursday which of the three we're going to pick, so.
And to answer your question, what can you do? Decide, you know, decide, get a firm and go. Now, I have to warn you, we're the middle firm. So you have the first firm and you have the last. And they say in interviews, you'll get a job if you're the first or the last, but you'll never get a job in the middle. So can we do anything for you to remember us? Because the next group is very, they're all, we're all friends.
Isn't that the Goldie Lox test?
Yeah.
The middle one is just.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Oh, you bet. Well, thank you for coming. And as I mentioned before, and I think our directors all know, is that we'll have a 20-minute presentation, and then following that, we'll have 20 minutes of questions. We will try to be consistent, ask you similar questions that we asked of your predecessors. But thank you for coming. It's not as quite a beautiful outing outside as it was yesterday. So maybe this isn't such a bad place to be today. But thank you. So with that brief introduction, please start.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for inviting us here tonight. We're excited to talk a little bit about our firm and what we hope that we can do with you. I'll start out by introducing the firm, and then we'll introduce ourselves. Wold specializes in public work. We, I really say that our niche is working for publicly elected boards. And that comes with a whole different understanding that most architects start with. It's important. We also understand that every community is unique. Every community has its own philosophies and its own values. And so what we pride ourselves on is really getting to know every district. And we don't do the same thing in every district. We customize what we do and we adapt and flex to whatever it is that your district really needs to move your goals forward. You're going to hear me talk a lot about collaboration today, and it really is something that we do from head to toe, all the way through projects and referendum planning. We do a lot of it in-house as well. We're very collaborative, and we're all about getting people involved in the process and helping you to make decisions. It's really not about us making decisions about you, not just you, the school board, but you as a community making the right decisions for your district. And that's what we focus on. I am Paul Aplikowski. I'm a partner with the firm. I've been with the firm for 22 years now and have dedicated my entire career to educational facilities. So I've been doing it for a while, including this long-range planning part of the process. I also have some experience in your district. We helped to set some of the groundwork that, for your last referendum. You may know that we did a lot of the data analysis and things that led to that. Unfortunately, we weren't able to finish the job, so we would love to pick it up again and come back.
I'm Valerie Peterson. I'm Valerie Peterson with Wold Architects and Engineers. I've been with Wold for 14 years. I have predominantly only done K-12, and I really find a lot of passion in the K-12 sector of work. I have done quite a few elementary schools, but I think one unique thing is each elementary school I've done is very unique because it was built for that community and that district's set of needs.
I'm Kevin Marshall. I'm a mechanical engineer at Wold Architects and Engineers. I've been with Wold for over 24 years. I lead our group of in-house engineers. Have developed a real passion around working with districts through the early planning process to make sure we're developing complete solutions that are really working to meet your needs.
I'm Tyler Erdl with Wold. I've been with Wold for a little over five years now. And my role as a job captain would be kind of managing the team, focused on communication. I do have some family within the district, so it's exciting to be able to potentially work with you guys.
And I also wanted to introduce Nick Marcucci, our senior project manager. So Nick also has some experience in your district. He was part of the efforts at the last referendum, as well as doing the security projects across the district that were part of that era. Nick has 30 years of experience with Wold doing schools, and so has got a lot of wisdom under his belt. So we know that you're on a couple hours of these interviews already. We're going to try to be really quick and concise. We would love to invite you into a conversation. So if you want to interrupt us, please feel free to do so. One of the questions I think you should ask yourself is, why would you hire Wold? So we've suggested that there's probably some key points that I think really differentiate us. One of them is the idea of building consensus. It really is a part of everything that we do. We don't make decisions for our clients. We certainly have a huge part in helping shape the discussion that you have, and that's a great responsibility. But we're really about building consensus with you and your community. The commitment that we bring to things. Again, we've dedicated our whole careers to public education and the facilities that go with that, and we take that very seriously. And then the leadership, that we've done this many times. We have a lot of expertise. We've been seeing sort of everything that can and should happen and know how to navigate you through that. So in terms of building consensus, it's a commitment to your community. And really, our, one of the things that differentiates us is we want to involve everybody. Any takers can be a part of the process. And we'll involve people in different ways. But we really do that all within our fixed fee, where there's no limit to the number of meetings we have. And in long-range planning, we really, we propose a fixed fee, and that fixed fee is until we get done. And if that's in six months, great. If that's in three years, so be it. It's a matter of when it all is ready to go and when your communities come to consensus. Commitment is really that in everything we do, we want to get it done right. We never give up, and always to do with honesty and integrity. And we think that's really important because whatever we do and how we shape that process reflects on the school district. And so it needs to sort of be beyond reproach. And that's why we go to the foundations of building a strong set of data around the process so that you as a school board and the administration, as you go out and talk about this referendum or the long-range plan, that you have a good set of foundation underneath you. And then that leadership. We understand public school districts. It's just part of our DNA. We understand the challenges that you face as a board, talking not only with each other, but talking with your community, trying to involve people. And so we can always bring that understanding to things. We're very good at facilitation. As I said, our whole firm is built on the concept of collaboration, whether it's doing a project or doing long-range planning. We really know how to facilitate meetings and bring people together. And then also, I'd like to say, we are the leader in innovative school facilities in our area. We're doing tons of projects. We do hundreds of projects every year, and we bring all of that experience and knowledge about what's going on, what works and doesn't work. So we wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about pre-referendum planning. And one of the most important things is that everything starts with trust. It's all about trust. And the actions that you take as a school board and the actions that the schools take as an administration reflect what you are to your community. And it's important that, again, this process has the integrity to have you look good as you do that, and make sure that we're on the right track. We know how to help you build trust, not only across the board, that's my double metaphor, across the board, but with the administration, with the facilities committee, and with the public. So again, it's involving them and making sure that we're explaining school facilities and your needs in a way that they can understand. can understand. We believe that trust is something that's earned, not an entitlement, and I think that's a healthy place for everybody to start the conversation, that you have to go back to square one and make sure you have that. And then I can't emphasize enough that it's important to have a good set of facts. You need to do your best to find common ground and figure out how you can talk about your facility needs in black and white. I've included this chart and it's on the placemat that we gave you too. There is no pat answer for how to do a facilities planning process. We really customize every one of them that we do depending on the needs of the district and the culture of the community and all that. There are some things that we find to be pretty fundamental that really need to be part of any process and the first one is teaming. So the first step we would want to do is sit down with all of you, and I mean that in the broadest sense, maybe not only in one meeting, but, and talk about where you're at as a school district, where you're at as a community, where you're at as an organization, and then we would really design a process around what's best to get through all of this and figure out how to move you forward. Your guiding change document is a great document. I had the pleasure of watching you develop it on camera the other day. It's a great start. There's a lot of good stuff in there. It's probably not done yet though, or it needs supplementary documents to really round out all of the things that should be in a facilities plan. And I know it's important to you as a board to make sure that you set this process off in the right direction and we probably have some work to do to make sure that we get everything covered and make sure that you're comfortable with the results. You've already, I understand, formed the facilities committee and from what I understand, it's very much along the lines of what we would recommend, so that's a great start. You're ready to go there. The next step then is to start talking about building data and we try to put those into two kind of sets. One of them is the objective data, which is mostly things that we produce, but also you might have some other consultants, for instance, teamwork that did your enrollment projections, or there might be some other studies that the district wants to pull in, but by and large, we produce a good set of data that explains how your facilities work. One of our hallmarks is being able to do that in a way that is understandable by the public, so we try to take the very complex topics of facilities and the impacts that they have on education and explain that so that everyone, again, can get on board with that. The other part of the data gathering is what we call subjective data, so that is starting to gather people's opinions, starting to understand people's values, their goals, and that also becomes part of the process. And obviously, that's a little bit softer and work with how we roll that in. The next step, we would say, is agreeing on needs and I'm going to say this a couple times during the process. It is the most fundamental thing to build consensus and it's something that's often lost. You need to stop and agree on the needs that you have as a school district with, and that's not just with you, with a few people, that's with your whole community because that's really what builds consensus. Then after that, you would move into options development and figure out how to evaluate these options and narrow those down. Again, that's all things that we would facilitate with the planning group. I had mentioned a number of places where we do data collection or data reporting. I won't go through all of those today, but there's dozens of different ways that we could produce information about how your district works. I'm going to have Val talk about one, which is what I call one of the fundamentals of facilities planning, which is capacity versus enrollment.
So we all know that the capacity of the building might not completely align with your enrollment. A lot of that, to understand capacity, you really have to understand utilization. And understanding utilization would start with meeting with your curriculum and actually meeting with all of the different administrators, the principals of every building, to understand what happens in this room. You know, just because you have one 900-square-foot room does not mean it's used as a classroom. It could be used by other items. Through that process, that even without moving walls, but the way that you categorize a room or the way you put program into that room would affect the utilization, which will then affect the capacity. This is, then we can take that information and compare it against your actual enrollment numbers that you're working with. On the next slide, we are going to go through, we kind of call this a four-room schoolhouse exercise and we have one for each grade level configuration. So this is like a K-5 elementary school. As you're aware, in grades K through 5, they kind of run a homeroom schedule. So when the students leave their classroom to go to music, there's not another set of classroom students that go and use that space. Because of that, the actual capacity of your building is actually two, which are represented by the dots. We times that by your teacher-to-student ratio and we get a 50-student capacity for this four-room schoolhouse. At the next level, at middle school, excuse me, middle school, when the students leave their classroom, oftentimes that classroom is then filled by another, if it's American history, maybe it'll be another American history, or it does offer the flexibility of maybe a world language is, can be in there. However, scheduling is not 100% perfect. You can't get every room utilized 100% of the time and that's where an efficiency factor is utilized. So in this case, all four rooms are considered teaching spaces and then we times that by your student-to-teacher ratio and we times that by an utilization, or I'm sorry, an efficiency factor. We indicate they're at 80%. Lastly, at high school. High schools are kind of fun. They offer more student choice, more electives for the students to choose from, and because of that, they can often increase your flexibility for scheduling. So again, we kind of take the four dots that we consider capacity-containing classrooms. We times it by your student factor and then usually we see an increased efficiency factor for what I've mentioned before and we can have a greater building capacity. So I think what we really strive to do is really create a simplistic document that takes all of that complicated data and tells a nice story so that you can understand, anybody can understand this document that would be put into the task force binder to, as Paul mentioned, so that everybody can agree on the need.
So this is actually an example of one of the capacity analysis that we did for your district several years ago. As Val said, I think our virtue is to take a very complicated topic and turn it into something that you can publish publicly and have people understand, agree with, and believe in because you don't want variable in the capacity and the enrollment. You have to agree on some numbers because those metrics can lead to very different understandings of what your facility should do. Again, that's just an example of one of the many reports that we might do. I wanted to spend just a moment, again, dwelling on this concept of agreeing on the need. One of my favorite phrases is needs unite people and solutions divide them. Anybody that's tried to go out to eat with your spouse would understand that. You can all agree that you need something to eat and you're going to go out, but figuring out where to go is a little bit of a trick. The same thing happens with facilities in a much more complicated way. What we really work to do, and again, your guiding change document is a great start at it. We need to document the parameters of the district. We can understand your goals and agree that, yeah, this is a problem. This is something that we need to deal with because the more consensus you can build at that point, the easier it's going to be to agree on what the solution is. If you start out just shooting solutions out to people, it's like picking people's favorite color. You're going to get people with a lot of different opinions. So we, again, I wanted to emphasize that because it's a point that's lost a lot of times in the planning process. So how do we build consensus? We sometimes get laughed at because we try to get committees to have unanimous votes for things, but I'll tell you that most of the time, we're able to accomplish that. And this is our definition of consensus. It's also in our proposal, but it really centers on the idea that every stakeholder involved in the process, in this case, we'll talk about your planning committee, feels that their voices were heard, that they were understood, that their issues were discussed, and also through that discussion, has an understanding of why their issue was or was not included in the plan. And the critical part is that they're willing to let the plan move on as the group's consensus builds. And that's really the secret, is that you need to make sure that you have had whatever conversation needs to be had and listen to everybody and let them put something on the agenda to be talked about and work through that. Because what's going to happen, if you've done your committee well, they're a representation of your community and those same questions are going to be asked by your community. So by having that conversation, you're building the tools to discuss that with your community and why you chose not to do something. So again, the secret to that is to engage the entire group, to listen to all the voices and build consensus. And again, we believe that time is a variable. We certainly can work within timelines. We certainly have the horsepower and the ability to work at whatever pace you want to work at, but sometimes if you have a difficult problem, it takes time to talk through it and work through it. So we like to say that time is a variable. And the important part is when we have those conversations and we have a lot of great conversations with committees, that we know how to turn those into results. There's lots of different facilitation tools that we use. You can see some of them there. My favorite one probably is the fist-to-five voting, if you've not heard of that, but it's a way of voting and also sharing some opinion with it and it's a great tool for consensus. Again, it lets you, it lets people vote to move forward even if they have some concerns with what's going on. So we have lots of tools like that and then lots of different meeting formats that we can use. So we would look to involve other stakeholders. If there's somebody that comes up with an idea, if it's, I don't know, gymnastics or something, feels like they're not part of the process, we would go and have some kind of a venue with them, include them in the process as an example. So again, I just wanted to emphasize the fundamentals of a facilities plan involve these steps. You have to gather fact-based data. You have to agree on that data, come to consensus on that. And then another part of that step is to agree on what you're going to deal with because you may not choose to deal with everything. Some things might need to wait for some future date. Certainly work through options and through the whole thing, we have the experience to help you understand what you're doing and the ramifications of that because that's really one of the tricks, is understanding that how the decisions you make now are going to affect you going forward and the district going forward. And we do this more successfully than anybody in our area. In the last 17 years, we've helped nearly 80 clients pass over $3 billion worth of projects and we do that every time by getting into the community, understanding everybody's unique values. And again, our emphasis is that we're helping you and your district make a decision. We're not making decisions for you and by doing so, we feel that we have a much more, a much more accurate rate of hitting on the right solution, the one that your community will support. I want to spend just a couple of minutes talking about projects because we're architects and I'm sure everybody else did, so we'll cover some of that, but we'll go real quick. One of the things I wanted to talk about is we are a large firm. Sometimes people find that a little intimidating, but I wanted to hit it on the head. There's opportunities and challenges that come with that. So the opportunity is that we are doing literally hundreds of projects across the state every year in public school facilities and we learn from every one of those. So we take that experience and all of our clients benefit from it, whether that's understanding the bid market at any given time or building more robust specifications or any of those kind of things. The challenge that comes with that is that you might worry about whether or not we have enough time for you and can focus on you. And really, our answer to that is that we always dedicate a small team to a district and that's not just for a project or a planning effort. That's for the long term. Again, I said, Nick and I, we're both here 10 years ago. We're back again, if you'll have us. We're really here to build a long-term relationship with the district because even as the administration changes and the board changes, you still have a community that has some common ground and we really want to strive to understand that community and anticipate what they need and try to give the best services we can.
And I think it's important, you know, Paul stressed a lot about our process of involving people and having as many meetings as it takes during the planning and facilitation process, but that's also true during our design. So when it becomes a project, we still will meet with whatever stakeholders that there are. We will have a very transparent process that's always exposed back to the board and back up through the hierarchy as needed because in the end, our goal is for you to have a high-quality project that's on budget and of high value.
So similar to that pre-referendum process, we believe that project design requires a community-wide interactive process and we're going to work collaboratively with the group to create consensus and a feeling as though they have designed the building and we've just helped facilitate that. The core planning group is typically made up of various administrators, staff, parents, and sometimes even school board members. And we believe strongly in involving as many stakeholders as possible to create a sense of ownership in the project and this user group process allows us to increase that number from the people that we've already touched with in the core planning group process. And then this process, as you can see in example on the slide, creates a set of simplified drawings that everybody can understand and in turn provide us with the knowledge and understanding of those users that are actually using those spaces. We also use these drawings as a coordination tool within our own design team to ensure that our whole team understands the needs of all of the spaces.
Again, this is something that's unique to our firm, doing these user groups. I think some others are starting to do it, but we produce a whole document that is just about user input and make sure that those users understand and can buy into that. I'm going to keep this moving because I think we're bumping up against our 20 minutes here. So one of the other great tools we use is, we call it innovation days, so it's a workshop that can bring staff, students, and parents together to help think innovatively in design space. It's just one more of the tools that we can use to create some excitement around projects. And I think I'm going to have you just talk about engineering a little bit.
Sure. One of the strengths of our firm is our group of in-house mechanical, electrical engineers because our engineers are in-house and really integral to the team. We can start our work from the very beginning. From the very beginning, the planning process is a resource to better understand the facility needs and make sure that we're identifying the full range of issues, bringing those forward, really developing complete and quality solutions. But more important than that, or as important, our work doesn't end when the project's done, but we'll continue as part of our long-term relationship with the client to make sure that those solutions that we discussed in planning are actually fully working and meeting your needs in the projects.
We also understand green architecture and how to incorporate that, if that's one of your passions. We have nine LEED-certified buildings and many, many Energy Star certified projects, so we can do all that. I wanted to just end the presentation portion with a little one-minute-long video. This is a portion of a video we created on one of those innovation days, but it really captures some of the energy that we like to create, a little energy we'd like to create when we meet with educators and get them involved in the design process.
So we're in Farmington Schools today. We're meeting with dozens of teachers and students and helping them redesign their space and reimagine how space can inform what education does.
Here, we've added a gigantic glass wall into this classroom here.
To walk into today and see all these stations set up around certain learning spaces and have multiple architects at each table. I mean, I was actually blown away. I thought we were just going to sit down and talk about stuff. I'm like, this is serious. We're really going to get after this.
So we really build the day into three different parts. We spend the morning doing what we call discover, where we look at different ways that things are happening and the different ways that space can shape school. Then we move into the design phase where we really brainstorm with the educators about how they might do things differently, how their spaces could change, and see what we could do with the spaces that they have now.
What are some things you guys are thinking that you'd want for these three classrooms?
We get to design what we're going to be teaching in and kind of get to decide what it will look like for our students. And we know our students, so letting us kind of have our say in it and give our opinions is really nice.
So again, we involve that process and everything. That's just one of those innovation days, but we try to do that everywhere. I'll just wrap up by emphasizing again that I think we have the leadership, the commitment, and the ability to build consensus that your district needs to move this plan forward. We have a lot more project stuff we could show you, but we'll hold off.
Thank you. We have approximately 15 minutes for questions in. And so anybody, Jen, you want to start off?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. So my question is about consensus and I think your entire presentation did a phenomenal job covering that. I'll read it. If you feel like there's anything extra that you want to add to it, fine. I am satisfied, but I do feel it's important to ask everyone the same question. So our community has gone through some very tough times in recent years, as you probably are aware. Could you please provide an example of how you would go about reaching consensus among a group of individuals with a wide variety of different viewpoints? And like I said, you touched upon that quite a bit, but if there's anything else you want to add, that'd be great.
Well, I think the most important thing for your community in particular is to not run away from the discussion. I think you got to get it out on the table and talk through it and let people air whatever history they have from it and build some common ground out of whatever comes from that. It's the most important thing.
Paul, just going a little bit to the opposite end of the spectrum because like Jennifer and other people at this table, we've looked at your literature, we heard you tonight, and you put a tremendous amount of status and importance with consensus. How do you balance that off with time and timelines? Because sometimes people will say, well, that's great, but it takes twice as long. Your response?
Well, you can't afford to not get it right. As a school district, the reality is that most of the things that you As a school district, the reality is that most of the things that you want to do require a referendum. And to the extent that you want to do something small that you could do with lease levy or your LTFM funding, you probably have a little bit more of a luxury of doing what you think is the right thing to do, but because you have to get through the election, you really need to understand at least how to get 50% plus one of the people to agree with you. And that is the trick. In the end, we don't typically get 100% votes for our elections. We have a pretty good track record, but not that good. So you need to find the line and that's really how you control time. You got to build some, you got to find some traction around something and that's part of what I say that there's no pat process for every district. You got to kind of read the tea leaves as you're going through and figure out how to find a path to the end. And I've done this enough to know that if everything is fairly clear, you can do it on a pretty fit timeline. If there's a lot of disagreement and deeply divided disagreement, it takes time. So I'll admit that I've had ones that were supposed to take three weeks or three months, I'm sorry, and they took 18 months. I've had ones that have taken multiple referendums with a deeply divided community. So Winona is an example of that and we're actually on year three of what is going to be probably a 10-year plan to finally meet their needs. And it's all about understanding the community and reacting to them, bringing them in, building trust. Part of what they did was pass a small referendum just to show their district that they could do that successfully. And then they're going to come back and now three and a half years and try again for a larger thing. So I won't guarantee you on a timeline. I do understand that you're heading into some perilous territory with the presidential election next year, so we certainly need to navigate around that and figure out where we have to land.
Thank you. Others, Liz?
Yeah. I just, and you kind of touched on part of it too. We have the, I don't know if it's a unique situation where we have empty buildings at the same time we have waiting lists. So how would you frame a discussion around that whole issue?
Boy, I don't know. Do I have to go on the record with that right now? Really, I'm not here tonight to prescribe an answer for you because I don't understand enough of what's going on. My history is what I've read in the paper, which we'll always put a grain of salt with, and what I understand from about six years ago. And so it's not fair for me to answer that. The issue is it's just got to be talked about. And again, we would document the capacity of the empty buildings or building, whichever you have at that point. We'd talk about enrollment. We'd certainly want the enrollment projections to be a part of the discussion and talk about where in the district kids are. We'd want to talk about transportation and understand the ramifications of how you get where. And really, again, it's up to you and your committee to decide what's right for you. So maybe you can reoccupy those buildings. Maybe there's a plan that works around that. Maybe that's too much of a challenge and you need to adjust for where your population is. So I'm going to punt and say that we can figure it out, but we'd really need more information to do a responsible job of that.
And this is just a backup sort of to that because at the beginning of your presentation, you said you were here earlier and there was something that you wanted to come back to finish. What were you talking about?
Our relationship with the district. It wasn't anything in particular. We see all of our clients as, if you want to talk in business sense, you're a long-term resource. It's our intent not to chase a single project with you, but help cultivate you, make you successful because we know that if we make you successful, business will come for us. And so it's just a continuation of that.
Thank you. Others, Jen?
Sorry, could I just, a very quick clarification. Ms., you had mentioned something about visiting with the building leadership. I just wanted to make sure I got clarification on that. So did you say that you, that is part of your plan, your intent is to visit with the building leaders?
Definitely. We'll meet with all the principals to understand how they use their different buildings as well as your different curriculum and department heads, you know, your special ed, your, all of those type departments. And some of that, through that vetting process, it might expose some maybe inconsistencies between buildings that maybe needs to be a larger discussion or it might just be like, no, you know what, that building's unique, that community's unique, and that's right for them. So I think it's kind of that transparency that really helps bring it through.
And as I mentioned earlier, I think we have layers of all three of these buildings like this one that are underutilized. And so the question, can you make it? Can you utilize it? We also have parts of the district where I think a legitimate question is to say, do you need a new building? And then we have some in the middle that a fresh analysis of, is it beyond repair? Should it be modified or what other needs that you bring it and make it competitive or maybe the better word is comparable to maybe a brand-new elementary school. So that's more of a commentary. Other questions, Sarah?
I'll ask a quick question. So getting back to that idea of timeline, I think, I feel like we have a relatively aggressive timeline at this point, at least what we're thinking about, wanting to have something that we can kind of like start really talking about in tangible way by like November, December. Can you speak to that a little bit as far as, you know, what kinds of factors would go into, you know, you said sometimes it takes more time, you need to go over. How much control do we have over that? What kinds of factors would affect not being able to get something done by, say, December or something like that?
Sure. Well, ultimately, the thing that takes more time is not being able to build consensus. So that's the trick is making sure that we get there. We did include, and I believe you have this in your materials, a proposed timeline that gets you to late next winter, early next spring. This particular timeline, we actually stretched out because we anticipate that there's going to be some conversation to be had. This shows that task force meeting about every month, which stretches you out into the next school year, the end of the calendar year. But we typically like to do them about every two weeks. And so we certainly could accelerate the process if things look like they're going to take more time.
And I see you have a potential May 2020 potential referendum campaign going up to that point, so that's logical.
Sure.
Thank you.
Can you talk about how you bring the board along? At what points do you communicate with the board? And when you bring us the final project, is it just one option or is it multiple options?
Sure. This is a critical part of, I call it the teaming meetings at the beginning. We need to understand what your comfort level is and how you want to be involved in this process. We've done everything. Teamworks, I'll quote teamwork, they generally believe boards shouldn't be on a planning committee, that that's not the board's work and the board should listen to the community and they have a whole reasoning behind that. We've certainly done everything on, everything under the sun from the full board to certain board members. So I think we really need to have a good conversation with you and understand what you want to do. So the peril here is, one, the board, board members on the task force can carry more weight than other members. No matter how hard we try to do that, your voice is sort of more meaningful when you do that. So it's an important responsibility of how you're on the task force. And then also, and I'll be frank, do you have members that you feel you can trust to be on that and will you respect what comes back to the board when you do that? Because that's critical. It doesn't matter if you have a liaison from the board on the task force if they're not speaking for the board or if the board doesn't respect the information they come back with. So again, I'm not going to cut any corners here. There's some real conversations to be had about how you want to do that and how you make that successful. In terms of what comes back to the board, again, there's a highly variable thing. I understand sometimes boards want multiple options to come to them. I believe the healthiest way to have this happen is that we get so in alignment with the board that when the task force produces the result, that you can get one task, one option, that you agree is the right option for your district. And of course, that's an art form to arrive at that point. We typically would like to shoot for that, but we would leave it open-ended such that if the board at some point in the process starts becoming uncomfortable with what's going on, we can instantly switch to having multiple options come to you or we can get your input and feed that to the task force so that they can change things. We believe that it's really the best thing, again, if we can agree on need and that includes the board and the task force, if we can agree on what we're trying to solve, we'll have much fewer options for how to solve that and it instantly gets you down to a small handful of options. And ideally, I think what helps pass referendums the best is when the task force gives you a recommendation, you believe unanimously in that recommendation and decide to go out to the community to vote for it. Again, leave some latitude for how things might happen as we get into the process, but that's our goal.
What it sounds like then is that you've worked on a number of projects all over the board where sometimes it's very much board involvement, and I'm talking about representation actually on the task force and some not. It seems to me that it's a little bit tricky because if you pick somebody with credibility or try to, that almost loads it right away. So I mean, it's an advantage, but can also be a big disadvantage because then they get at that evil that you were talking about when they speak. You know, it's like that ad on TV, when they speak, everybody listens, you know, and response or maybe.
Some communities actually use the board as a resource to that task force. So they might not be part of the vote, but they're there as a resource to bring a bigger picture, a different perspective and as a tool to the grouping.
I have one, Oatana, their referendum a few years ago, and actually, again, we're doing another referendum there this spring. They, the entire board attended the task force meetings but didn't speak. And so they all were able to see all of the conversation and they found that helpful.
Yeah. And I think one of the things I would share with you is our board has talked about is all the meetings that you would have would be public meetings. All board members actually could go. That doesn't mean they all participate or whatever, but it's open to the public and it's open to board members as well. So I just put that out there and the board may change your mind at any time, but I think that's kind of where we are at, at this point. Other questions?
Mark? Yep, I've got one. In your history of working with districts with several different communities, how do you engage and seek input from all demographics within those communities, including building consensus with demographics that might not be fully represented on the task force?
Sure. Well, one, I understand, and my understanding is that you've already tried to do that and get the task force to be well-balanced. So that's key so that they have a seat at the table, so to speak. If issues come up or it seems like somebody's not included, I would suggest that we would do separate meetings, input meetings. Those would be input meetings and that input would be shared with the task force and they could then wade through that and figure that out. Again, this is where we don't draw any limits on what we do. So that might be a one-meeting thing where we get some input about an issue or a particular programmatic need, or it might be multiple meetings where we actually run almost like some kind of side input committee. I've done it where you do two, three, four meetings with people to work through issues. And again, all of that is transparently, again, projected back to the task force so that they can consider that in their decision.
You got a couple of minutes left, Shelley.
Thank you. You talked during your presentation that everything starts with trust and that that is important to the work you do. How do you go about building that?
I think integrity is the most important thing, that you be here, be sincere, do your best work always, try not to make any mistakes. I wish it would, I wish we'd never make a mistake, but what we do is complicated so some of that happens. But when you do, own up to it. Explain what happened and make it right, whatever it takes to make it right. It really is that simple. If you behave well and handle yourself well and act with integrity, people will build trust in you. Again, I don't expect to arrive with it on day one, but you'll get there.
Thank you.
Liz?
Well, just because I asked this to the other group too. Do you, if, we talked about it's got to be worked out as far as having board members on the committee, what their role is, but beyond that, do you watch board meetings to see what's happening apart from the committee that you're working on as well or attend board meetings or?
Certainly. So we'd certainly be happy to report to the board in whatever capacity you want.
Or subcommittees.
Or subcommittees, yeah. So we'd be happy to participate in those kinds of things. We don't usually just attend board meetings. We might watch, if there's issues that are relevant to us, we'd be happy to watch them on video. Or again, we'll come. If there's an issue that's relevant, we'll come and be a part of that or just observe that. So that's certainly an option. And again, we work on a fixed fee. Our goal is to get the best information we can and be the best facilitator for you. So we'll do whatever it needs to be done for that.
Thank you.
I do have one question that is kind of specific to you guys. In your fee proposal, there is a statement that says that we do not foresee a full facility analysis as part of this process. Could you explain what is meant by that?
Sure. So facility analysis is an interesting jargon term, but it really involves examining all the nuts and bolts of the district and all of your carpet and all of the fans and the air handling units and that kind of analysis. So many times that is something that's really important to do before you start a long-range planning effort and we certainly could do that for you. We would likely, as part of our base fee that I talked about, would do some version of that. So we, when we were here last time, we actually have a whole database that documents all of the equipment in your district. It's a little bit out of date because you've done projects since then. So we would use that and our knowledge and then certainly team with your facility staff to understand where you're at with facilities and use your 10-year LTFM plan to understand the district. Our guess, not knowing very much, is that that's enough to get things done and to give the task force the information they need to move forward. The only reason I put it in there like that is because it's a very time-intensive task for us to do that full documentation. So I really wanted to just note that if that's what you want, that probably doesn't fit in the base fee.
Okay. And just as a quick follow-up to that, do you, even though you're not, wouldn't be doing that process, would you still anticipate doing tours of each facility?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, and you did that last time as well. Shelley?
And just to clarify along those lines, if there are needs as you tour, you would still make that part of the discussion, correct?
Yeah. The goal of that is not, the only limit that that's trying to create is us having a team of eight to 15 people crawling through all your buildings and poring through blueprints. Everything else that, if you want us to understand your buildings, we're happy to understand them and analyze them and particularly even zoom in on issues and figure out how to solve particular issues. That's all part of the process, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're covered here. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
It was very intriguing and very interesting. Thank you all for coming and spending time with us. And you should know by Thursday, that's when we meet and our expectation and our hope is to side on one out of the three at that point. But thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Exciting times. Good job.
Thank you.